I will call this special common council meeting to order. September 23rd, 5:30 PM. Can I have a roll call, please?
Stubby.
Here.
Hill.
Here.
Nick Burke.
Here.
Boike.
Here.
Frisball.
Here.
Sorensen.
Here.
All here.
Thank you. We'll move on to number three, which is the 2026 to 2030 Capital Improvement Plan. Presentation of draft plan and discussion.
You do have a physical copy of the presentation that the mayor got to come up on our screen over there.
Everybody should have one of these. This is now your fun and exciting CIP book that you get to write in, make notes, do whatever you want with. Obviously, you also have the PDF version, but then in there should obviously be a packet that looks like this. That's going to be kind of the presentation we're going to kind of be going over with you here tonight. And then kind of go from there. So first thing, I guess we'll go to the next slide here. So this is me. So I'm Adam Regal. I'm with Barrett. I've been working with the staff now for a little over probably about six months here, kind of putting this together so that it can be presented to you tonight. So we'll go to the introduction. So basically, the reason why it was recommended to kind of do a long range capital plan is it's a vital tool for any organization. Really, number one, it allows the room for forward thought and discussion. So you guys can start seeing all those projects that essentially are there and start to kind of better prepares you as an organization for change. So you can see the things that are coming up, things that you need to keep in mind. And it also creates opportunities that may be otherwise overlooked. So when you don't have everything kind of down in a formal policy, that's when things kind of slip through the cracks and you don't realize, man, we really should be focused on this. We should be focused on that. Obviously, the next one then is when we're talking about government entities. So obviously with the city, you are faced with increasing expenditures and revenue limitations. So what a CIP does is the creative solution must be developed to obviously meet those demands. So you need to continually be seeing over the next five years, what should you be doing? And then start to kind of plan out, okay, that's what you should be doing. What now can you do? Or what are those items now that you want to pull out of this CIP that become the musts that you need to do? And then again, long range planning is the key to the entity's success. So with this CIP, the goal is we understand that there are probably going to be things in here that you're not going to be able to fund. If that's the case, we don't want them to essentially drop off the map. We want you to continue to see that and so that we continue to kind of build this thing and have it be ever flowing and ever evolving in a live document. Also, we want to look at the funding sources and the uses to essentially kind of roadmap out, okay, what do you need to do over the next five years? And how could you do that or how would you do that? That also then helps to kind of the bottom part here when we're talking about grants. So potentially going after grants, looking at different sources there as well as also this is a key part for your rating agencies. So when you are going out and if you are going to take on municipal debt, one of the questions that always comes up is, well, do you have a long term plan? Or are you just kind of, you know, deciding, ah, we're going to do this project here and we'll do that one? They don't like to see that. They want to see this where you have a long term plan. So do the grant agencies, they want to see that as well. So basically, what this now becomes is kind of an integral part of your budgetary process. Usually, your capital improvement plan is the first part. So as you can see, we're kind of talking about this first. And then it kind of ebbs and flows into the future conversations of, okay, well, what does that mean obviously then for the rest of the budget? So kind of planning process, how that works is we create a timeline. We kind of organize the partners involved. We do an inventory assessment. So essentially what happened here is we kickstarted this process in about May. We had the organizational meeting with obviously Jesse and the staff to kind of talk about, okay, let's work on that. We then brought in all of the department heads, had opportunities to kind of get them involved in the process. And then they basically spent the month of June and July kind of doing inventory assessment where they looked at all the projects that they thought would make sense. They established priority rankings for those projects. And then essentially in July and August, we did kind of the due diligence work of looking at the financial forecast. So thinking about, okay, what are those items? What are they going to cost? We then prepared project requests, so kind of detailing what was the description of those projects? What's the justification? What year should they go in? And then essentially, we drafted the plan that now is in front of you tonight. So one of the things that goes into a capital improvement plan is kind of the policies. And this is something that you're going to see probably as we continue to do this. This evolves all the time. So there's multiple organizations that continue to kind of ping pong back and forth about what is what you should put in a policy, what you shouldn't. But generally, these are kind of the key things to remember. So they're individual tangible capital type items. So what we have you do is we actually had the council adopt a capital threshold policy or a capital improvement policy. One of the things that continues to change is kind of, well, what is the minimum value of what should go into a item? That right now has a lot of debate as kind of Jenny and I are learning. Depending on the organization, it depends. So for instance, the Public Service Commission will say that that threshold is $5,000. If you're talking about generally accepted accounting principles, which is typically what your auditors kind of look at, that says it should be $10,000. And the GFOA is kind of somewhere in between. So the policy or the actual resolution that you guys adopted is 5,000. But what we tried to do to look at this to kind of get you in line with everything else is we have it as a minimum value of 10,000, just kind of going forward. Again, it's a useful life of more than one year following the date of the acquisition of whatever that item is. And then typically, it applies to item, individual items rather than groups of similar items. But this kind of depends. So for instance, if you're going to be doing a large project, so like in the future, there's the possibility that you're going to need to do new Department of Public Works. Well, we're not going to have you list out every single item of furniture. So in that situation, it might make sense to actually combine all those. But typically in your CIP, they should be individual items. So that's just something to kind of keep in mind with that. All right. So what we have here is kind of essentially the summary of what is in the CIP. And if you're looking in your binder, this actually starts in tab number two. So tab number two is where this is, you don't need to look at that in your binder right now because it's up on the screen. And you're obviously going to have time to kind of look this over, but that's kind of where this starts. So essentially what this is doing on the top here is showing you all of the funding sources that would be necessary if you decided to take on every single project that is in your capital improvement plan. As we've talked about, it's very possible that you are not going to be able to do all those projects. But if you did, essentially, you can see here are the funding sources. And just like most municipalities right now, there's really only a couple of options in how you're funding things. You're either bond proceeding those, so as you can see here, that is the majority of your capital improvement items. You are either using water and sewer bonds to cover kind of those utility projects or other sources of funding. So either you have cash on hand, so that usually falls into kind of your sewer utilities, they normally have cash on hand. Or potentially you have some other options there as well. The goal hopefully in the future, as we continue to kind of update this, is you'll see some of those other items as far as grants. We want to see that grow. So our hope is that now by having this, when the staff starts to submit potential grant projects, this will help you become eligible and we can start to throw those in. But we also want to be realistic when we're showing this. So that's why we don't right now have anything showing grants because we want to be as realistic as possible and show what you would need to do in order to fund these projects. So we have a use by category. So every single department essentially has their own section here, which we'll get into in a little second. But you can see we've now listed all of the various departments. And then if you were to fund these projects on the bottom, we have kind of beginning fund balances. So some of the goals with some of these particular items is that they may not be occurring in one year. It's you're slowly building up a fund to essentially get to the point that you can, you know, have that fund and cover those projects. You can see that kind of falls into like, you know, server replacements, financial software, some Badger books, things down on the line, those type of things where that essentially is you may be borrowing money, but you're not going to be spending it right away. It's slowly going to be building up in order until you can get to a point. So on the next one here, you can just kind of see on the next slide, we've got some graphical information for you.
I'm working on it.
Nope, you're good. So again, this just kind of shows you depending on how you are, here's the different graphs that we have. So we've got kind of the chart here showing you over the course of five years, you know, what particularly are the sources of funding? Not really surprising, the green is your bond proceeds since that is the majority of the projects you're seeing. That tends to be the bar that is taking up the most. And then we've got a little bit of other sources of funding there and kind of the purple. And then the orange essentially is water and sewer bonds. The next one here just kind of shows you it in a different format. This is your pie chart showing you the majority of if you were to fund the CIP would have to be done through bond proceeds. And then a split of kind of water sources and everything else. All right. So then we kind of look at then the use category. So going back here, we're now focusing on the second part. So yep, keep going down. So now we're going to get more into the actual department area. So if we go to the next slide, you'll see here, this shows you generally your department years by cost. Not surprising, Public Works is the highest just because of the fact that unfortunately, they have one of the most expensive items, which is roads. So they are usually going to be one that is showing the majority of projects are kind of occurring there. Very typical then, Utilities is the next one that kind of shows particularly the area that has a lot of, you know, potential costs. And then all of the other departments there. The next slide then just kind of shows you the bar chart, you know, it shows you the pie chart factor here. So you can see the costs that essentially are slated in the project plan in the CIP here for Public Works. Parks and Facilities, Police, Utilities, City Administration, the Fire Department, Cemetery, and the Library. On the next slide, so now what you'll see is then starting basically in your book on tab three, that's where we get into each individual department. So every single department is going to essentially have the same thing where they're going to have their own summary page. So for here, we pulled Public Works. So you can see the funding sources right now, we have estimated for Public Works are essentially bond proceeds. That in order to take on the projects over the five years, it would be bond proceeds. And you can see then how we've kind of mapped that out where we have roads that are occurring in 2026. There's some replacement funds that essentially are being estimated over five years, some chip and sealing of roads, crack filling, and then some various equipment then that kind of goes through different ones there. We've got the connecting highways that we're not quite sure what the cost is going to be for that yet, but we want to start identifying that as potential project. That is very common. So other things that you'll see in there that potentially would be, you know, as you can see, as well as the DPW building, we have that in 2030 for 10 million. What that starts to do is again, gets you understanding as we talked about that, you may not be able to do that in 2030, but you want to start putting that in there. So that way then, when you're talking about grants, when you're talking about, you know, conversations about state funding that may be available. If you have it in your plan, you are better obviously listed when you're applying for those grants or having those conversations. Or eventually it's going to be a topic that you know you're going to have to take on, that if that continues to be pushed off into future years, it's only going to get worse. So eventually it is something that you're going to have to have a conversation on. The next tab here or the next slide. So then what happens in every single department here, kind of in section three or tab three, is there is going to be a project justification classification section. So with Public Works, you can see here, we pulled you in the example. So this is East Park Avenue. This is one of the projects potentially slated for 2026. There is a description section here that tells you what it is. It's the replacement of East Park Avenue from Wisconsin Street to North Sweating Street. The justification is the current road essentially has reached its useful life, is in need of replacement. There is then an expenditure and a funding source section. So you can see here the estimated cost for what that road is potentially in 2026. The funding source then is bond proceeds. And then every single project kind of has a budget impact and other section that talks about what is the impact to the budget? And potentially then what funds are going to be used. On kind of the top section there, you can see then the justification. So it shows you the department, what's the useful lights of that item? And then essentially the priority. Typically, when we're talking about the first two years, most things are going to be ranked five and fours. And then as you get into future years, that's kind of when you get the three twos and ones. So the next slide kind of shows you then, this starts basically tab number four in your books. So this is then potentially the budgetary items for every single department. So what you have in here then are the requests. So you can see all the projects that are slated for each single department. So again, this is Public Works is the example. They've got about seven possible projects that could be done in 2026. The requested funding sources, so a little over $2 million is kind of what is slated there. Then on the next one here, we then get into tab number five in your books, which now is the beyond five years. So the reason you want to do this, or what we try to do is every single department that potentially has projects into the future, we want to start putting those down for a couple of different reasons. One, again, this is your grant opportunity. So if you have something that is slated in your plan and it has been in there for, you know, multiple years, but the funding source isn't there, that's your opportunity to essentially go for grants. The other thing is hopefully, knock on wood, you get a pot of gold, you get the sky falls down, you know, money rains down on the city of Berlin and you guys have an opportunity to fund projects that potentially weren't there. That's what these lists are helpful for. They allow you to look at and prioritize, okay, is there maybe a project that potentially might, you know, need to be looked at or could be looked at? The other thing you're going to notice here is depending on age of equipment and age and things that could occur, there may be items that suddenly will get flipped to needing to be fixed right away. There may be a road that you didn't, you know, think would need to be replaced for 10 years. And now all of a sudden, there's a gigantic pothole that was never there before, and now it's moved that priority. So this allows you really as kind of council members and also the community to kind of see those continual possible projects that could occur. But then also allows you to kind of keep that comprehensive list so things don't fall through the cracks. And also the main reason then too, is it's not something that isn't identified. So if you have something in here that, you know, you've been slated for 2030 or outward, and then you get to that point, and usually you always get that question from somebody, well, we never knew about this or this wasn't coming about. You have something you can point to and go, well, actually, no, this has been in our capital improvement plan. We've been talking about this for a lot of years. Okay. So essentially, again, tonight is not, we're not expecting you to approve anything. We're not looking for that. The goal with this now is you now have this book. Essentially, what we want you to do is take some time, look through this, look through the projects, look through the costs, you know, see what questions you have. Obviously, if you do have questions, pitch them to the city administrator. She'll get in contact with me and Jenny and we'll obviously look through that. But this is kind of the process here is we like to do this presentation. This is the book that's in there. And then essentially what we'd be looking for is in your October meeting is an adoption of the plan. Now, what I will state with that is by adopting the plan, that does not mean you are committing to do all of these projects. Because that's usually one of the questions that you get from the communities, well, you just adopted this, that means you're going to spend on that. No, what this means is you're adopting a plan. The step then is you're going to take this adoption and then take 2026 and try to put that into the budget and see where that goes. And that's going to be some future conversations about as we continue to update this capital improvement plan on a yearly basis, there's different ways we can take it. Usually, your first year is you kind of throw in the kitchen sink. So we ask all the department heads to look at, think of all the projects, think they're in there. That is a perfect rationale and one that I typically try to argue is that's what your CIP should be is every year you should be updating that and keeping that going. That obviously is a conversation for you as a city. There are other municipalities where they want their CIP to be almost dead on with whatever funding decision they make. There's pros and cons to that. One is when you do that, you're going to lose a lot of projects. So that's where we try to, you know, I try to advocate for that, but at the end of the day, that's the decision you guys have to make. So one of the things we're kind of have to be discussing in the future is essentially, you know, what, how do you want to start trying to chip away at this rock? And either it's going to be you're going to do a borrowing annually, you're essentially going to do a borrowing, you know, every year, every two years. Those are some of the things, but the answer is you have, we have to do something. So it's a matter of, you know, starting to look at, you're seeing the projects that are in here, what have I identified from the staff? And now this kind of starts the conversation of, okay, how do we fund this or what do we fund this and what does that mean? So that's kind of the goal here over the next month for you is to kind of take a look at this document, look through it, see what questions you have or concerns. And then we'll try to answer those. But then hopefully we'd be looking at, you know, in one of your meetings in October, formally adopting this. So then the staff can essentially use that to kind of plug into the budget and see potentially what you're going to be doing here in the next couple of years.
Great. Anybody have any questions for Adam?
Adam, would you just talk a little bit about the scenarios that you put together for the every other or every year borrowing? Just in case anybody has any questions as to what that actually is showing? Because they're, if you don't look at these every day, they're a little, little complex.
Yeah. So essentially what you should have, or what you kind of has been communicated is you got scenarios that probably look like this, that kind of show you different options. So what we tried to run is kind of some different scenarios we see in the community. So I guess we'll start with the smallest one. So the smallest one is a $750,000 scenario that shows you if that's essentially what you would borrow annually. What does that do? So when you're looking at these sheets, the way to kind of do this is we're going to go from left to right. So you can see here, the first thing we have is essentially the existing debt service. So this is the debt service that you already have on the books. So this has been projects that you have already done, you went out and you bonded for, and you've got those principal and interest payments. We then get into kind of the blue section, which is the preliminary. So right now, what we have this showing is that in this scenario for $750,000, we'd be looking at doing a state trust fund loan. So we actually wouldn't be going out into the market. One of the reasons for the, I guess, the positive for that is by going through the state trust fund loan, you don't have to do any of the, you know, kind of due diligence with going through the process of trying to find investors. It's through the state. There is no issuance cost for that. It's essentially we work with the team, we submit an application, you get it approved. The downfall to that is their rates tend to do be a little bit higher than what you potentially could get in the market. So these are all things that we would continue to kind of play and run scenarios if this is the route you would want to go. But what this essentially does then is shows you for a $750,000 debt issuance, you're looking at about $103,000 a year in prints, when you combine the principal and interest payments. So what that does then is essentially goes into the next section where we have hypothetical future borrowings. So the intention would be then is that if this is the rate that is to kind of determine that every year you want to fund about $750,000 worth of capital improvement projects, we're going to be doing that every year. So we essentially have that layered in. So what happens then, as you can kind of see here, is you've got the hypothetical future borrowing section. The total combined debt service then takes the existing plus the new and then continues to layer in every year, you're adding in that 750,000. And then you get to kind of what's the important question here? Well, that's the combined mill rate. So as you can see right now, in 2025, your mill rate for debt service, so this is just for debt, is $2.02. So whatever your total mill rate is, when you consider everything else that you essentially levy for, the debt portion is 202. What you can see there is as this kind of layers out, essentially the goal is that we want to get it to a point where it's pretty much, it tries to get level. So there is a little bit of an increase as you can see, once you take on that borrowing, it essentially goes up a little bit to $2.16, $2.37. And then it starts to kind of level out and roughly you stay in that kind of $2.09, $2.05 range. And what that means though is that means every year you're still doing $750,000 worth of capital improvement projects you're borrowing for that. So that's kind of the goal. So essentially what we try to do is get it to a point where there is going to be a little bit of an increase in that debt service levy. But then eventually, as we're paying principal and interest off, we get it to a point where it levels out. So that kind of shows you the hypothetical of if you were to do $750,000. Then we essentially looked at, okay, well, what if you do a million dollars worth of capital improvement projects? So you can kind of see the same thing. We take the existing debt service, we throw in the hypothetical principal and interest. And then we throw in future kind of principal and interest payments that would be made to show you the total debt service there. Obviously, with a million dollars, it's going to be a little bit more, it's going to be that cost. But essentially, as you can see there, once we kind of get going on the plan, it eventually kind of levels out and you're anywhere between about, you know, $2.40, $2.50 is what's related to that. And you're continuing to do about a million dollars worth of projects. The last scenario then we kind of ran was looking at what is becoming very common for a lot of municipalities is they essentially will do two years of borrowing. And the reason you do that is obviously then you save on issuance costs. So this would be the same thing. You'd still be doing about, you'd still be setting aside about a million dollars worth of possible CIP projects, but you're borrowing $2 million for every two years. So you can kind of see here what that does and basically is is pretty similar. So this just kind of comes down to strategy. It's looking at eventually, it's going to get it to about $2.45 kind of becomes the average. But this is all kind of the different kind of scenarios and things that we can kind of look at and run. So obviously, again, there's a lot of kind of opportunities and different scenarios that we can kind of look at. The key for you guys is now to take an opportunity to look at all of those projects that are in there and start to think about, you know, what is something that is palatable, obviously for you as the city to do? Because, you know, the answer is it can't be nothing. It's that you know that that's not realistic. Is there, there's projects that has to be done. So it's kind of now coming up with working, you know, we're going to work with you, we're going to work with the staff. And obviously you as the council to come up with strategy of, again, I always say we're chipping away at a rock. It's we can chip away at it fast, we can chip away at it slow. It's what again, is that kind of comfort level and what does that mean? So as you're looking at this and kind of coming to some, you know, some conversations and questions, let us know. But we wanted to run three scenarios so you could kind of see typically how that kind of plays out or potentially what that would do to the debt, you know, cost portion of your taxes.
Anybody have any questions? If not, Jess, if you have anything else for Adam?
None on this part, I don't think.
All right. Well, then we will move on to number four, which, thank you, Adam. Which is the 2026 Budget Staff Presentation of Draft, Departmental Budgets and District.
Yes. So these are kind of color coordinated by staff members. But a couple of things for you before we dive in. For each of the budgets, there are two proposed amounts at the end. One would be to consider a 3% wage increase and one would be to consider a 1% wage increase. Of course, you can set that at any level you want, zero, one, two, three, whatever the council deemed appropriate. But to give you an idea of what those costs look like, that's what's been provided. Those numbers that are in the dark green or the blue are numbers that are generated from my spreadsheet based on that increased health insurance. These are employee costs. So those numbers really the department heads don't have any control over. Those are just dictated numbers based on other things. So your black numbers, if that makes sense, are are things that could be tweaked outside of what the, what the right, what the wage is. If that makes sense, okay. Additionally, we did see a bit more cost savings than is shown in here for health insurance from people choosing between the focus and the broad. So I will have a little bit of updating to do, but it's not huge. But, but it's good, right? It's, it's, um, so that, that hasn't been incorporated through these numbers yet. Also, these numbers assume a couple of things. They assume that we are going to move forward with the recycling, which is another item for us to discuss. If we don't, then we need to put about another $150,000 into the levy because we are currently showing that we would shift that cost from the levy itself to a special charge. So it would have to, if it's not on the special charge, then we have to put it back into the levy. The wheel tax is reflected in here that was already approved. So. Does anybody have any general questions before we dive into things? Nope. Okay. And I think the first ones in your packet are the green, which is, which is Scott. And so this is made up of several different budgets. Public Works is pretty much the first packet of green. The second packet of green has the parks and the pool in it. Just, but I'm assuming you will start with general public works. And this is proposing a total slight decrease from this year's expenditures.
Okay. So I'm basically going to touch on the line items that were changed, not so much the benefits and the insurance and stuff like that. Okay? So in general streets, there aren't anything other than the, the insurance or benefit changes that are occurring. Public Works Maintenance, the same thing. Move down to snow and ice control. That one is also the same. Next change is going to be the streetlights. There was a small change of 4,000 to the utilities part of that. From 64,000, 63,000 to 67,000.
Is that just rates?
Yeah.
Actual spending?
That's rates on the electricity that it costs or that's rates from people hitting them and them needing to be fixed?
The cost of them being lit. Moving on to garbage and refuge, other contractual services. That's the estimated increase from 243-ish to 255.
Oh, I think you skipped a page.
It's backwards, behind, there's a, oh, no, you don't have that.
Oh, it's just one over, just.
Sorry, maybe I got them in a different. Oh, there, okay.
Sidewalk repair, did you? I found it.
It's okay. Okay.
Did I flip flop?
It's okay, we found it.
Okay.
Okay. So I'm going to. You said increased?
I'm sorry?
Garbage increased?
Should we just go back to the sidewalk? Isn't that where you guys?
Yes.
Let's, let's go that way.
Okay.
So sidewalk and repair maintenance, there was an adjustment of from 5,000 to 4,000 per operating supplies. That's the 340 account. Storm sewers, there was no change. Municipal building. There was a change Indians Equipment and Structures line 380. From 7,500 down to 5,000. Moving on to building and grounds, there was an increase from 14,000 to 26,000 for the utility side.
And that's all just rates?
When I looked at what was, what's actually being spent versus what was budgeted, it seemed prudent to put more money in that line. When I looked at what was, what's actually being spent versus what was budgeted, it seemed prudent to put more money in that line.
And ideally, some of those utility rates should go down on next year's because of all the LED, um, retrofits that we had put in this last year or this year. Okay, now I'm on, now I think I'm on garbage and refuse.
Okay.
So like I mentioned earlier, that increase from the 2, 243, five to 255, five-ish. Based on the, the increases that they give us, um, annually.
Contract.
Per the contract, yes. Uh, same goes for recycling, uh, that 290 line. Uh, weeds and nuisance control was lowered from 5,000 to 4,000 in the operating supplies, the 340 account. Um, there were no changes in a cemetery. You'll see in the revenues at the bottom of that page, uh, there's going to be a decrease in state transportation. And our state connecting streets should stay the same.
Once we have the actual numbers, we'll of course update it, but.
Yeah, they should be coming out relatively soon here.
Any questions on that, guys, before I move on to the next one?
Yeah, there's two lines. There's two lines that just are highlighted that say motor vehicle registration fee and special recycling charge.
These are new revenues.
New revenue.
So I highlighted those because this is the motor vehicle registration fee is the wheel tax that you implemented. And then the recycling special charge would be, we moved the recycling off of the lobby to a special charge. So I highlighted those just for, to show that that's a difference this year than we've had in the past.
Thank you. I have a general, I don't know if you'll know the answer to this. I don't even know if I can ask. When somebody hits a light, do they get charged for it?
Depends on if they have insurance.
So if they don't have insurance, we're not charging them for it?
We try to.
Okay.
We do our best to recoup our costs, definitely, yeah.
When's the most recent one? Like, did that happen recently that that sparked a?
No, it was literally him saying that it went up.
Oh, okay. I didn't like, did I miss a bunch?
No, no, you didn't.
Let's knock on wood because we've been getting cookies lately. Now, if I'm not mistaken, I believe we're on the parks and swimming pool.
Yes.
Okay. So, uh, the parks, um, there was a suggested change to the flower beds and fertilizers from, uh, 6,500 to 4,900.
What number is that?
Process there, I'm sorry.
What?
It's a 353 line, I'm sorry. So you'll see a six, $1,600 difference lowering it. Uh, thought process there is eliminating the hanging baskets on, uh, light poles downtown. It's not only just the cost of the flowers, it's a little over $6,000 for Andrew to water and maintain them for the amount that, the period of time that they're up there. That's time he could be spent doing more important things.
How many total are there?
There is 16.
So just so I heard everybody gasp, so there's 16 hanging plants. And what is our total cost by the time you, you factor the cost of those and Andrew's fees or?
Fuzz over eight grand.
So that's two grand each.
And the flowers are going to go up, they do every year.
I also am sad about that, but I, maybe in the future a fundraiser group could sponsor some or some, I'm just an idea.
I even was thinking, um, when he mentioned it that, um, in the future, I know Bootify Berlin had raised some, some funds for when we redid downtown. Um, that, that could be a possibility to help, but also I wonder, I'm going to get a lot of flack for this. How many people see them hanging up there?
I think everybody does.
Versus it may be something that was lower that we could, i- if there were any more statement pieces, whatever, that's something that can be decided in the future.
Would that possibly be an idea in the future if a group wanted to sponsor them, like, could we, that we approach you and try to do that?
To get them lower to the ground?
No, no, to like sponsor the flat, like if we can.
Like if a group wants to raise $8,000.
I don't know if anybody watches Andrew go downtown and have to water every single one individually.
I do see that in the mornings on my way to work.
I don't know if anybody realizes how heavy those baskets are either. And when they have to hang them and take them down.
Are we okay with that? Can we move on? Or is there going to be, anybody have any other questions or suggestions?
I feel like if a group wants to step forward and pay for it, then they're more than welcome to.
I think we all knew cuts had to be made.
I wasn't, I wasn't expecting the sticker shock with everything.
I was.
And I'm a flower person. I didn't, eight grand is a lot of money.
I think because we hit a lot of the things that make Berlin unique or personal or beautiful. And it's taking away all of the character and we're doing these little things and they're hitting onesie, twosies, a thousand dollars here, a thousand dollars there. But they're not like great bub hut budget impact, but I don't know. I guess that's what it feels like. It feels like we're hitting every little thing, but not making a huge impact.
I think they're all going to add up the little things that we are doing and that's kind of where we have to start with this.
Okay.
Where are we at with that?
Swimming pool.
Move along.
Okay, uh, the next cut is for, uh, under uniforms, that's the 391. Just lowered it from 500 to 250, basically cut it in half. And then the swimming pool, I don't know if you have any discussion on that, but I think we all know where that lands right now.
Right, this assumes that we do not open next year, so the costs that are in, are in here are for the utilities and other hopefully minor maintenance or repair that would need to be done. And of course, we still have to insure the pool.
So when we're looking at $7,500 for utilities, uh, I'm assuming that's more winter related? Is that?
It is, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Believe that covers it.
Anybody have anything else for green pages?
I guess one of my things I was trying to look at is, um, I know we got some new snow plows and stuff. Has that affected, um, like how much manpower you have to use on your snow plows and things?
Potentially, yes. It should cut down on the, the time that they're going to be out on the road. Obviously, it depends on the storm situation or the duration of it. Um, but knowing that they have wings and plows instead of just, um, two of the trucks had, three of the trucks just had a front plow. So it'll be covering a lot more ground in quicker time, so.
The prognosticators are calling for a lot of snow this one. So, true, true, true.
I just want to point out, based on last year's budget, cutting the pool, that's a hun, little over $165,000 savings. Getting us closer to a somewhat nearly balanced budget. Purple?
Purple. Purple is public housing assessment, economic development, zoning, Tim's realm.
Okay, well, uh, as has been the case, I think in previous years, there's quite a bit that's just, uh, remaining the same year to year. Uh, the one thing that will jump out at you is, uh, in the second page I have here, under the land use planning, the professional services is down from 30,000 because that was the comprehensive plan. So, um, obviously that's not needing to be repeated another year. That will hopefully, you know, run according to plan, no pun intended. Otherwise, I mean, there's some modest, um, ones that were just trimmed down to more what is in line with what the expenses have been the last couple of years. As far as, uh, operating expenses and the like. Could go through those, but, um, are there any questions or comments?
Um, just a note for the comprehensive plan, that does have to be redone every so many years by, um, statute. We also have a couple of other plans that, um, if we find the money for, would not be a bad idea to do, such as the park and recreation plan, um, that too would potentially afford us more grant opportunities. Because a lot of times you have to show these things in a plan in order to get credit to move forward with grants. However, we don't have anything slated for next year, so that's why this is. Cause the comprehensive plan is it required every 10 and most communities do it every five. So it'll be a while before that one pops back in, but.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Tim? Also, once you've presented, if you would like to leave, you're more than happy to leave. If you want to hang around.
I do have a question.
Hang around?
The bottom of your, um, revenues, it talks about miscellaneous inspection permits, business and occupation licenses, and those are zero across the board. Is there, we don't?
They have been for several years. I think they were put in at one point and it's just carried through because I showed, you know, the last couple of years as well.
Yeah, and I guess I should mention there's also the, and I don't know why it was in there previous years, but the, there was like a WDF that was a disaster fund from flooding that I think would have just be one time or a regular type of, uh, revenue source.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions for Tim?
Should be the fire department red.
Sorry.
Pink, fire.
So for fire and emergency management, um, basically we're just trying to match this a bit more with how, um, things are operating now. So, uh, for emergency management, which is the second page, this used to be a shared position, as you know, um, Gary with the county. And now we have a firefighter who is also the emergency management person who's been appointed by, um, the chief. So as we currently have it, the chief can be the emergency management person or they can designate our emergency management person. So those costs, rather than being an on-staff person, are, um, a monthly stipend, I believe of $500 a month to cover, um, the emergency management. I'm pretty sure it was 500 a month for emergency management. But those wages are actually in the fire department stuff.
I'm questioning the health and life insurance, though.
That is a Cobra.
Okay.
And that's why it also has the matching revenue at the bottom.
Okay.
It's a Cobra. Um, it, we probably wouldn't have to show it, but just for me to keep things straight, that's what that is. It's, it's not an actual employee. So we assume, um, the same increases if the council teams that appropriate, uh, for the fire department. Um, a couple of things that, uh, were, were changed, um, that are going to look pretty significant. Um, are the, um, from 17 to 27,000, the property services and vehicles. Uh, interim chief Duhurst has been tracking over the last several years what those costs were, and this is just a better match. I think, um, the total, as you can see, the total numbers are not changing a lot. It's just where things are to try to match a little bit better of what he actually has seen and what it anticipates for, for future. But I, I mean, that one, that one was a pretty, pretty, um, significant one. I'm trying to just look if I, I've looked at them so many times to try to remember if there were any other real big.
Would it make more sense for the office supplies and operating supplies to just completely come out of the fire department since it's under them anyways? Instead of having it split between emergency management? I guess they just, are, are they really going to track who's taking which pen?
Sure. I mean, to be perfectly honest, if, if you wanted to just eliminate the emergency management and completely combine it with the fire at this point, I think you can because we're no longer, you know, I think this was mostly separated because it was a joint effort with the county. You know, so it made sense to track everything separately that way, but you, I don't think we'd have to at, at this point. The only thing that I'd have to confirm though is our contracts with the other municipalities. Because the towns and stuff, when we work with them, they pay a, a portion of our fire department budget, so. So that's the only thing is I'd have to look into it. I don't, I don't know if we, I don't think we do any of their emergency management, so. Now that I say that out loud, we probably have to keep that separate, but if it truly is, you know, a few dollars.
Just to make it cleaner.
Said operating, office supplies, operating supplies.
Yeah.
Okay, we can move those to fire.
Okay, any other questions on fire and emergency management?
They're hoping to increase their numbers, so. There's a little bit more in there for meeting some things like that. That's an as needed cost, so.
I'm going to, um, mess up your order.
Oh, okay.
And full PD next and then libraries since they're here in case they want to go. And EMS, sorry, sorry. The blue is the next one. Brian, you're up.
As you can see, there's pretty minimal changes from, uh, 25 into 26. A couple of notable exceptions being in line 119, which is a crossing guard wages. That's about half. Um, and the reason for that is that we no longer have the crossing guard up at the corner of Washington Street and Broadway Street with All Saints. Um, now being outside of the city, there is minimal child traffic for school in that location. Um, moving down to line 160, public relations, instead of having a thousand dollars and, and we had that for 24 and 25. That's really money used for things like at national light out for handouts with children and things like that, or even buying Halloween candy, for example. We ultimately dropped that down to zero for next year. I think that the paperwork you guys have shows line 210, the professional services to have a, a significant jump. And that was an ongoing discussion with the city administrator and I about whether or not the city prosecution attorney's fees would be included in that line. I think the consensus this morning was that it would remain on the city hall side, so that is actually going to remain the same 2,000 that we had in 25. Is that accurate?
Yes, I am going to move that over into one of the orange sheets, which we'll get to, um, under the, uh, special legal counsel. We'll switch it, we'll move it over to there.
So with that said, line 210 would remain the same 2,000 that I had in, in this current calendar year. Really with that, any of the numbers in black are virtually unchanged from, from 25 into 26. The, uh, green ones or the blue ones would ultimately depend on whether or not there was a, a wage increase for some of our staff. And I say that because some of my staff is covered by the bargaining contract with the union. So they, they get their wage increase whether the rest of the city does or not.
Yes, the 3% for the, uh, for the contract is in these numbers.
How many staff are not affected by the union?
Three.
Three.
My, myself, the assistant chief, and then the secretary.
Okay.
Are there any questions?
Which I'm sure all aware, if you do a different wage increase, it will impact compression issues.
With a, with the removal of the public relations budget line, does that mean you guys aren't planning to do any of that next year?
No, we'll continue to do it. We just may not have items to, you know, for a child to grab a pencil or whatever it is that we have, if, if we had items for them.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thanks, Brian. Sorry, Evan. Chris?
It's the light green.
Light green. Forward to that.
Where did my light green go?
Okay, so there really is minimal changes in mine as well. Biggest things that you'll notice are under the contractual, there's $5,000 less. Um, we have two sources of electronic resources, which means the online books, ebooks, um, and then other, um, formats that are available in there. Um, one of the sources that we have is called a hoopla. Um, they are significantly higher per circ, per circulation um, than another source that we have called Libby. So I have been contemplating dropping that anyway. Some of the library, local libraries are dropping that and that's like a $5,000 per year. So that's why that one is that much. So that's why that one is that much less. And then we just kind of looked at some of the other ones, fine-tuned a little bit as to comparing what I've spent other years, how much has been left in those accounts. And we also are fortunate that we have the Friends of the Library that helps us support a few of the things that we need. And that's one reason why some of these areas can be decreased as well. Just for instance, with the conferences and training, we are, there are three of us that are going to the Wisconsin Library Association State Conference that's coming up. And we have asked friends to cover mileage for that, which is almost $500. So we're very fortunate that, although we're a very small and mighty group, and this is on that, so thank you. But they're able to help us out in little areas that, you know, we might not be able to do. We're also fortunate that we have the Winnebagox Library System that provides a lot of the training and support for some conferences within our contract that we already pay. So they cover some of that. So we didn't really need any increases there. Operating supplies is probably their biggest budget, other than the salaries, et cetera. And we thought about, you know, do we want to decrease that? However, prices are increasing, and they're starting to add on fuel charges to every single purchase that we have. So that line covers everything from all of our materials in the library to programming, you know, all the things that we do for the public. So that's a big part of why are we there? If we don't have those things, people wouldn't be coming in the door or they'd be going to other libraries. So if you're wondering what that is. And then the other line item that's kind of a larger part of my budget is the professional services. That is the Winnebagox contract that we pay to use and belong to Winnebagox Library System. They provide our ILS, which is all of our computer software for patron materials and keeping track of all that. They do all of our IT, make sure that we're in compliance with the state statutes, and as I mentioned, some training, et cetera. So other than that, there isn't a lot of changes. Over, I mean, with the changes that we have, we're about 7,500 that I was able to take off. So. I don't know, for those of you who are new, the bottom portion of the revenue, the library aid from counties. Just to briefly explain that, anytime a patron outside of Green Lake County uses our library, we keep track of that. The library, or the county, rather, that person came from, we have a formula that figures out how much that county owes. So at the end of the year, we figure out we have X number, you know, 100 people from Washeera County that use the library. And then we have a formula that we plug in, and then we bill Washeera County for that amount, so.
That was a new.
Who knew?
Do, do other libraries do that?
Yeah, so we have, it's pretty complicated. I mean, our.
The county pays it.
Yeah, our records that we have for patrons keep track of what township they live in. And then we keep track of circulation for every single person that comes in and checks things out. That does not include, unfortunately, any programs or anything that we do not do that can't be recorded by the computer. So, you know, some of those things, we just have to kind of, it's a wash between, some of our patrons are going there, some of their patrons are coming here. So that part we really can't keep track of, but circulation we can. And all of that is kept track of through Winnebagox, thankfully. We don't have to do that. So. Any questions?
Nope. Thank you. All right, the red, just kidding. Evan?
Just to, just to note, this is not part of the levy, okay? This is not part of the levy because we have a contract with the county, and the county reimburses our costs for EMS. So that's why it was kind of at the back. But we should let Evan have his moment, but just so, so that you understand that. And there's a couple of nuances in here because we are proposing to the county to move forward with an additional EMT and an additional, and moving to protected status, which we've talked about before. And there will be another meeting by that committee on Monday. So we don't know the answer to that, but.
Do we know how we're leaning on? Okay.
50/50.
All right.
So like many other people, my budget pretty much just moves money around. We took some money out of Personnel Services, which we use for paying for people to go to school and get their licensers. Moved some of that into conference and training, because UW has been having more training there than we have to send out for, so that's kind of coming out of there. Moved some money into operating supplies because everything goes up and yeah. You'll see gas, oil, property service, and vehicles, that gas and oil is zero. We moved everything to one account because it doesn't make sense for us to have two different accounts for that. And many, many times, it's hard to account for oil, as many of our vehicles go in for oil changes, they come out with costly repairs anyways, so it all gets shoved into property services, vehicles. So those two line items are going to combine into one, so you'll see that. Yeah, other than that, it's just moving money around. There's no increase into that. All the increase would be if the county goes, 3% would be basically into people, insurance, and that kind of stuff. And then if we go to the protected status with the extra EMT, that's the one highlighted in blue. So that would be the additional. So, but that meeting's on Monday.
Sorry, protected status, does that mean union?
No, that's the WRS, or the Wisconsin Retirement System, has two different programs, one that's protected and one that's unprotected. Protected status is usually for fire, police, EMS, correctional officers. And I don't have the state statute in front of me, but it's all written down in that. And when we moved over to a full-time department, I think that just got missed, and we never really looked at that. So we've been unprotected since. So we're trying to move into the protected status, so that way it helps with disability benefits and things like that if you're to get hurt on the job for employees. So, and a lot of other EMS agencies already have that, so it's just kind of, we're competing against that as well. It's usually something I get asked in an interview if we're protected or unprotected.
I remember you saying that last time. Thank you. My brain just forgot.
No problem.
Any questions for Evan? Nope. All right. Thanks, Evan. Red?
So red is the senior center and recreation. And the reason that these are together is because the position that is currently being advertised for the Senior Center and Recreation Facilities Director, as the budget has been set up for years, that position is split between these four different accounts. There's three for the senior center, one general senior center, and then they have a transportation program, which provides rides to people, which actually we work with the county for that. And then the senior center nutrition program, which covers like your meals on wheels as well as in-house meals for senior citizens. We also partner with the county on that. And then recreation. As you can see, there's not a ton to that, other than a portion of wages, and that's how it has been for quite some time. And that is because of their, that portion of their salary being actually the facilitation, the admin part, and not so much physical recreation stuff, if that makes sense. I didn't put in the wage as advertised for this, for that, for the position as well.
When does that close again?
29th, so Monday. Are there any questions?
I think this was asked before at a budget, but why did the donations to the senior center continue to say zero? I know in the past, there was some talk about it, but like money, like people donate money after their meals or things like that, and yet our donations to the senior center remain zero.
So as, so the money that comes into the senior center for meals, that goes directly back to the county.
Even if.
But like to donation.
Yeah. Because technically, the meals are all donation.
So that money goes to the county, then?
That money goes to the county. They, they keep, keep track of that. As far as the onsite meal manager, who's also the cook, has to submit all that back to the, to the county. And then we have reimbursement from the county based on the number of meals that we prepare and all that kind of stuff. So it doesn't come back to the senior.
I just know that some people have said, like, oh, like we give donation, and then it just continues to say zero, so maybe that's something we can look into, or.
Okay.
I just.
For the budget purposes, I don't plan to get money for donations. But you're saying your actual, I can.
Well, like in the revenues, yeah.
Sure, but I mean, I'm reflecting the actual dollars.
There isn't anything shown in that budget line currently. What? Oh, of course.
For the senior center, too, they have got their own checkbooks over there that are for that. So like Jill, if she gets a donation and they want it specifically like for her flooring that they just got and things like that, that money goes into their checkbook, so it doesn't run through ours, which is going to change this year, so that we will be able to see all of that. But I think that's why, because there are, I agree with you, there are donations that come in, but they're going into their checkbooks that we don't currently man.
And if that's the case, isn't that why we have Friends of the Senior Center?
Right, and I just went to the aging meeting last night, and we looked over those three accounts, and they do, they kind of treat it like a pre-buy, like they have a slush of money, and then they go do the things, and then they recoup if there's like an event from the city or from the county, but it can be like a two-month lag, and so that's why they have those accounts. But you're right, there is monies in there that are not accounted for on here, probably like $9,000.
Just guessing.
And why again?
We're figuring that out.
It had to do with the needing to like buy the, or rent the bus, for example, like on a trip. They had to pay ahead and then figure out the cost for it and charge everybody for the cost. And then they would go to the city and say, here's what it costs, and you know, but it had to do with the availability of.
I, and I understand that we're hiring somebody right now, and that should and needs to be a new protocol, that that stuff needs to be transparent and should be included on here. There should not be money floating around that none of us can see on a piece of paper.
Right.
We're working on getting all accounts into AccuFund. It's been that way for a while for a few different things, and we're trying to tackle it.
Yeah. But just going back on to, on something they had mentioned about donations and grants and stuff, too. Like I know the fire department just had a small grant, or is this just because we're not budgeting for it? Or, okay. We're not expecting money, but if it happens, great.
They actually have a line for matching funds for a grant if they were to get it in the expenditures.
Okay. But, yes.
Yes, I apologize. I thought you were talking about meals. I apologize. I thought you were talking about the meal fund.
No, just the revenue for senior donation. I just, like, there's a jar with money that sometimes people donate to, so that was my example.
And so if they're thinking, yeah, and so maybe that needs to be, just be something as easy as it's labeled, then. That, that money, if they think they're giving it to the workers or to the senior center, it needs to be labeled that that money isn't going to us, it's going to the county.
I'm guessing.
Oh, for the meals?
That's what she's saying.
To this other account for donations.
Right. But again, we should have that documented. And the fact that it hasn't been over the last several years is not okay either. Okay.
Well, and budgetarily, I mean, some, some of these donations might be for furniture or things specifically for things, which would also help in the budget, you know, if it's for a couch or.
You, I would agree with Jessie on this one. You don't budget for donations. Because you don't know what they are. So that line should.
No, I was looking at the revenue, though.
Yep, that should be a zero.
Because you don't want to plan on it. If you get a donation, great, but we're not planning on getting, we're not budgeting for it. Yellow, BCDC?
Yellow, BCDC. The only change is added a little bit more for miscellaneous because of some more fees and things that they had to just better reflect the actual costs. The rest of it is our contract for the person who fulfills that role, and BCDC reimburses the city for it. So. For the position.
Okay, orange, city administrator clerk, elections.
Yes, so the biggest change on the administrator portion is that I'm proposing to shift an employee who currently is working half-time city administration and half-time utility due to the needs of the utility, the needs of the city, and workloads and things. I'd like to, this reflects moving that to 20% city and 80% utility. Years ago, I don't know how far back, but previous, that was two full-time positions. They cut it, they cut it back and switched software and all that kinds of things. And I think we're just trying to figure out what we actually need. I think it's a lot closer to 1.8 than it is 1.5. So. And we are finally have a quick treasure both at administration, so we've been able to shift a little bit more of that workload to just help staff out overall. So it just better reflects the needs, I think, there. For elections, just really the number of elections. Next, next year is a big election year of four. This year, we got to have three instead of four, or instead of two, but, or will. But. Are there any, are there any questions? Is it, most of the changes here are, are simply wages. Although we did increase the computer maintenance agreement to look at what our actual costs are, as well as publication fees. There's a lot of things that we need to, as part of being the city, put in the paper and other places to keep the public aware of what's going on and meet statutes.
Any questions?
What is the cable TV franchise fee?
Yeah, and why did it go down? Oh, wait, I was going to ask about that one.
The cable TV franchise fee, we are given to, from the state. And looking at what we've actually received, that's a more realistic number.
And just for my curiosity, what is an amusement device license for?
It's a gamer, it's the gaming in the bar.
Like your.
Oh, okay. Charge your kids to play their Xbox. No, no. Okay. The next one with all the list of, I won't like name them all. Starting with for the attorney, special legal counsel, independent auditing.
Right. So as I said previously, we're gonna, we're gonna add the municipal court attorney fees to special legal counsel, which I apologize for the spelling error there. So that one, we'll take that money that was in the police department's budget and slide it over and add it to the 8,000 that was already, already in there. The audit, quite honestly, I think we're gonna end up paying more for an audit than we have previous years. Just, you know, we're, we're going out to RFP, and we had a lot of time and effort on this last audit, so. Just a more realistic number for that. And building inspection and codes, again, looking at what we've actually, what we've actually spent. There hasn't been any animal pound fees for some time, but just for comparison purposes, I took all of the budget lines that were on this year's budget and made sure that they're in this year's, in last year's, sorry. This year's budget, the 2025 budget, and made sure that the 2026 budget has those budget lines. So that's, so some of these are.
The animal pound fees line. Why do we have it anymore? When we, we get rid of the dog catcher, that was a position we got rid of. Is there some, when would we pay for the pound fees?
We won't. Like I said, this is just
Okay.
completely comparative to, to last year for consistency.
We can make the decision to get rid of it.
I mean, it's just. I mean, it's just, sure can. Needed a useless line, I think.
Yeah, there's a few of those in here, but. Then the last set of orange um basically is your. Catch-all for citywide uh things as well. So um. And some of the employee benefits for people who have um upon retirement, um employee assistance, things like that. Um your central duplicating, that's splitting, that's the cost for copies and postage and all that kind of computers. Um that we all share. Quite honestly, illegal taxes and funds, I don't know why we have that, but like I said, I was saying consistent to what you had seen previous years. Um contingency. I think with a budget over six million dollars, um contingency of at least fifty thousand makes sense. It was at twenty, you can certainly change that, but I mean, this is. This is your, your, things come up and we didn't know and all that kind of thing, so.
I feel like that's happened a lot this year.
We can increase it if you think it's necessary. But like I said, I thought on the size of a budget, twenty thousand, I, I wasn't real comfortable with.
Fifty thousand is um a good start. Let's hope we don't have as many surprises this next year.
Yes, fair enough. Um hydrant rental fee, uh as you, as we've discussed before, that is now at zero. Because the hydrant rental fee has been moved over to um the public fire protection fee on the utility bills. So that's why that's uh not, not in there anymore.
Was, in twenty-four was like half of the payment, right? That's why it was.
Yeah, it happened mid-year. Yep.
Um are we, I just wanna make sure, obviously we're making cuts or we only give one grant? We had one more in the last couple of years and we cut it out? What was the other one? Oh yeah, that's right.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I didn't see.
So historical society still? Yeah, okay. And fireworks were still. I'm, I'm just verifying.
Is that something that we should talk about? I mean, we just got eight thousand dollars for downtown for flowers and everybody gasped.
I think the historical society won't continue if we don't offer them this, just my honest opinion there.
I was talking about fireworks.
Oh, I thought you were talking about the historical society.
I feel like the fireworks have a bigger impact than the flowers do, but with the, the event that it brings in and the amount of people it brings in. Okay. There's another discussion, we can move on.
Okay, um the revenues.
Oh wait, I'm glad you changed the media outreach. What were we paying a thousand dollars for? Because I didn't get that.
I did not see anything under that budget line being used, so.
It was probably from our cable that we don't have, so I just want to make sure we were not paying it. But did we pay anything last year or was that just what?
I will double check.
Double, yeah, double check that, okay.
Um for revenues, um these are of course our best estimates as of right now. Some of the numbers we have received from the state. And if I have those numbers, they've uh been put in here, but there um are some that uh will tweak. If we get uh a better number from the state, they send us estimates of what they anticipate. Usually beginning of October, we have all those numbers. Like I said, we've received some of them. If we didn't receive them yet, then kind of based on what we had from the previous year. There are a lot of lines in here that I think were kind of one-time use many years ago and they have just been maintained. I don't believe we do that.
Went from one fifty to forty, now down to zero.
We don't have, yeah.
What is um shared revenue video?
Yes, that's a, that's a payment that we get from the, from the state.
What's the rest of the word though? Sir, video what? Thanks, Adam. I know it's not budgeted in here. Um there used to be a button on the website for donations for fireworks. Did we ever receive donations via that button?
Did it ever get put on there?
It was on, there was a big red button. I was just curious if it did anything.
I apologize, I didn't know that ever existed.
Yeah.
So I don't know the history on that one.
Okay. I was just curious if we, if we gained any to help offset the cost of that.
I didn't see anywhere um that anything was recorded as having received any donations specifically for fireworks.
Okay. Any questions on the orange sheets?
The reason that the number at the very bottom um is so significantly different is because the tax, uh. The levy's not in there yet. So if you look at the very top, general property taxes, um because. I have that as a plug number right now. So I will do that, but that's why when you look at the very bottom. We had five point two last year and only two point six currently. We'll put that approximately two point four in there and then that'll. Change that a lot. Okay, just in case anybody was wondering why that's like that.
All right, the cream colored council commission committees and mayor.
Yes. Operating supplies.
Why did we go up so?
Uh we cut, cut about a thousand dollars out of the council's operating supplies.
Why was that so high before?
I think they printed more paper probably. We do a lot of email now. They used to print everyone a packet and deliver it.
That's still a lot of paper. Yeah, that's a thousand dollars.
I don't know what they anticipated for this year, but we just put it back to two hundred. I mean, if, if anybody's aware of something, where that was in there, then certainly.
Is there a fee for Zoom?
Oh.
Any of our operating expenses in there? Because.
I'll double check, but I don't recall seeing it in that line when I was going through everything.
I think the only time you pay a fee to Zoom is if you have like a large number of people. Yeah, like if you wanna post.
I thought we, yeah. Okay, so something to look at.
Okay.
Okay, any questions? Okay. Last sheet.
So on the total sheet, um you can see expenditures versus revenues. What our estimated allowable levy for twenty twenty-six is based on our first attempt at um filling in the. Levy worksheet. Um just so everyone understands. The levy, as you know, can only increase for two reasons. One, you can be increased due to your growth um and equalized value. So our total amount of additional dollars that we can levy for due to our growth from last year is four thousand dollars. So as I know you're aware, expenses do tend to go up a bit more than four thousand dollars on a six million dollar budget. The only other way that we can increase um the levy is through borrowing. Um we, as you know, we have certain borrowing limits and all of those types of things, but those are the only uh two ways that we can increase the levy. So as this budget is presented with the one percent um employee uh increase. We are about a hundred thousand dollars um short of what is needed from the tax levy. Versus what is allowable under the, under the levy. So to increase that uh three percent to three percent would be about another thirty-four thousand dollars total. And um if you were to not shift the recycling fee, which we'll talk about in a bit, it'd be another hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. That would need to be put to the levy.
So when do you need us to make a decision about um wages?
The sooner the better. As far as getting these numbers uh back to you, obviously, everything has to be approved in November. Um so I can get you even closer to where we'll actually be for October uh with more decisions made. A couple of things um to keep in mind when, when you're looking at how much to include for an increase. If you choose to include an increase, are some of the costs um to employees. As we talked about with health insurance, um the city saw a slight decrease in our total cost of health insurance this year. Due to changing um providers. So that probably won't happen again. Um usually cities are looking at closer to a ten of fifteen percent or more increase. So we were fortunate there. And then additionally, employees are now paying, will, starting in January, along with this budget, will start paying up the percentage. And set that at seven and a half percent versus um just the flat twenty-five, fifty, seventy-five, depending on which type of plan they take. So that coupled with W R S changes, if you are in the unprotected status. W R S changes every so many years to keep that program funded. And how it works is employees pay a percentage and employers pay a percentage to the Wisconsin retirement system for the employees based on their wage. And currently, it is six point nine five percent paid by both the employee and the employer. Next year, it's gonna go to seven point two percent. So a little bit more of their paycheck will get sent to uh W R S. And um if they are utilizing the health insurance, they probably are gonna contribute about twice what they are currently contributing. Because if you were a single, the plant, you're currently contributing twenty-five a month and the plan options were about fifty, a little more, a little less. Depending on what, which plan you chose. And then for the plus ones, it's at fifty, it goes to about a hundred. And for the family, it's at seventy-five. And it goes to around one fifty. So it's, it's not exactly, but just so you understand. So employees as currently, if, if there's no increase, will see a decrease in their net take home.
Okay, so that's not a decision we need to make tonight unless anybody has questions at it or any input for Jessie.
Questions, additional information needed, anything like that, please let me know, because I certainly want to get you to the place where you feel that you have all the information needed. To make the best decision for, for this community.
I have a very unpopular question.
Okay.
Does the, are we mandated to do a raise in wages?
No.
Okay, so the one percent and three percent were just estimated.
Correct. You can do any amount you want, zero, one, two, three, whatever you deem appropriate. Um I wanted to give you an idea of what uh those raises look like. And also, like I said, it's about thirty-four thousand dollars total to go from the one percent to the three percent. Um so half of that, if you go to, you know what I mean?
Right.
So, no, it's not required.
Any other questions, comments? If not, we will move on to number five.
Can I request a recess for a bathroom break?
Sure. Recession at six fifty-four. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to recess.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Sure.
Now that she mentioned that.
Do you see it?
I lost one in my car yesterday too. Probably gonna get pulled.
Hopefully you'll find it.
That's why I lose them. I know. I had a thing to explain. The city pays for the fireworks at the wall. I thought that was all donations given by the A D C.
They just raise money, raise money for, you know, they have their own stuff that they pay for. I think a lot of it is uh like the trees. They put a lot of money towards that.
Okay.
Make it stronger. But they, they also like sponsor bands.
Right.
And then they'll do food and beer sales to make some money.
Right, right.
As a fundraiser.
I guess I just figured fireworks come out of all of it too. Still being new.
We doubled the budget a few years back.
Yeah, it was only five thousand. Which got a lot of flack from the community for how.
But then they.
Sad it was.
Then they go on Facebook and play.
Yeah, then it's not awesome still and.
Well, and to be honest. We've been told by the um, the company that, you know, they don't know what everything's gonna cost. Next year because of especially since shares and all that kind of stuff. So it may not be the same show as this year.
I don't know.
Right.
Yeah.
So, but you know, we've put in the same amount with them to hold our spot, not that we can't change it, but.
How many other communities are they fireworks sponsored by City Fund?
Oh, I don't know. I'd have to ask that question. I mean, like, it depends on the community. I know when I was in Slinger, the um Speedway did um a lot of fireworks on various nights and stuff. So they just made one of their big nights as close, as close to that as they had a event and. Yeah, so I mean, that was just kinda cool of them to, yeah, to, to do that for them.
Is anybody here on the A D C group or no?
Ashley is.
I just wonder where their situation is at with how much they're bringing that night.
Well, I think they're definitely uh making money.
Would they, like, would that be something that they could maybe?
Oh, I don't know. They, I don't know if they're.
Because the people are there for it.
True.
You know?
Yeah.
Kind of thing. Or they could host fundraising events throughout the year to help offset that cost.
I know they, well, they have a night at the.
I don't think they did this year. Maybe Seeker have been to a food night, did they, this year?
No.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
It must have been the animal shelter that Ashley was helping with.
Yes.
They did last year.
She did glass.
Right, but we were just talking about, you know, the whole fireworks part, you know, how many communities, like it's.
The only other thing I would like to have um. Um adjusted, no, I didn't. Talking about um when it comes to picking who does the fireworks. If we're paying for it, I feel like we should have, I don't know if anybody else heard comments this year.
No, because we have quite a spectacular performance at the camp.
I don't think Browns was as spectacular as it's been.
Yeah, well, the booth they used to do it for.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. I didn't, I didn't hit it the first time. What are we on? Reconvene. Six. Um, can I get a motion to reconvene?
Make a motion to reconvene?
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, on to number five, which is my least favorite for tonight. Update on the 2024 year-end audit.
Yes. So, as you know, we've been working on the audit since the beginning of the year. Had a conversation with our auditing firm this afternoon. Close but not done. And this is on, from my perspective, on both parties' shoulders. As you know, you've heard many times, we are learning our software. And it took us some time to get all of the information out of the software to the auditor. And we've used a third party to help us with a lot of that. But, hopefully, we have crossed that bridge now and we did finally get them the fixed assets list. Unfortunately, did not realize that that was in Banyan, so.
Banyan meaning the old stuff.
The old software, my apologies. So, our new software, AccuFund, had a module for it, but it was never set up. So we had to get that set up and then we had to get all the information into it and all that kind of stuff. So that's been completed now and they have it, but they were waiting for that last piece. So unfortunately, we are required to file our audit and our budget for Emma, which is basically filing showing our financial status for future borrowings, basically, for rating agencies, for.
Adam?
Sorry, yes. And that has to be done by, well, technically Saturday, but Friday. And I'm not certain that we are going to make that. However, I am hopeful that they will be close enough to give us something that we can say, here's preliminary numbers, and we will have it filed by a certain date. And I'll let Adam explain the fallout for something like that.
Yeah, so what this is, is whenever you obviously take out any type of debt, there, it's what's called continuing disclosure. So part of those requirements are essentially that for you guys, you fall under the calendar year, so whatever the calendar year is, from two hundred and seventy days from the end of the year, you have to put information out on Emma, which is the Municipal Securities Rulemaking Board is what it is. And what you have to put out there is really financial information. So typically, it's three kind of components. It is whatever the current year budget is, so like for this year, your deadline, the deadline is nine twenty-seven of 2025. On that day, you essentially have to put out three things. You have to put your current budget, so that'd be your 2025 budget. There's some what they call operating data information that goes out there. So typically, that's like your tax rate, what your equalized value is, you know, what's your current debt status. And then essentially, it's your audited financial statements. Those are the three things that have to go on there. And the reason you do that is obviously when you take out any type of debt, investors have the ability to go and see, well, how is that, you know, debt that I took out, how is it doing? Is the municipality going to no longer exist? It's not realistic, but those type of things, they can kind of see what's going on, what's the cash flow position. So what happens is essentially, if you do not have all that information in by that deadline, it kind of starts the clock on a couple of things. One of the things that I help, obviously, the staff with, is put that information out on Emma. And if we don't get everything out there by the deadline, I have to file what's considered to be called an event notice. And essentially, that's just saying exactly what Jessie alluded to, is that we have some of the information, but we don't have all of the information. And that really then starts a clock for kind of two things. One, it's the investors start to look at that. And if that's a pattern that continues, it could be one of the reasons they may not want to then obviously purchase your debt. The other thing that it also looks at is that's your rating agency, so Standard and Poor's and Moody's also looks at that to see, are you continuing to get your finances in on the right amount of time? So if it's something that continues to delay past that deadline and you don't have that information out there, you then start to get into the area of what's considered to be the negative watch and you don't want that. Because essentially, if that continues, that potentially could be a downgrade that you'll get. So what we want to make sure is we get something out there if we're not going to get it. So obviously, Jessie and I are working obviously with the auditors to see if we can at least get some draft information out there by Friday. That will be better. And then essentially, the goal is we want to try to, you know, at most, try to get it done and out on that website by the end of this year. So preferably, we could get it, you know, next month would be ideal. But we don't want to delay further on because then obviously that'll have some long-term implications.
Is it possible to post, as you say, like a draft or proposal and then amend?
Yes. So that is what we're kind of hoping for, is understanding that they may not have it done. If they can give a sum of a draft or an information, that puts you into a better kind of category. It's not ideal, but then at least then that's one of the things that you don't necessarily get dinged on, is it goes under an event filing. But if you have some information, the rating agencies and investors understand, you know, this unfortunately is something that's becoming more and more apparent, that auditing firms are struggling to get staff. So it is causing delays in obviously getting things done by those deadlines. The goal is, again, we would want to try to get everything in there before the end of the year because if it goes into 2026, that's when the rating agencies will start to kind of go, eh, we've got some problems, so.
Thank you. Any other questions while Adam's close? No? Second?
Sure. All right, then we'll move on to number six, which is a 2026 recycling fee to be moved from the levy to a special charge on the property tax bill, staff presentation and discussion.
Okay, so, in order to move forward with the recycling fee being transferred from the levy to a special charge, there are a few things that we need to do. One, we'd have to update the municipal fee schedule to show that this fee is going to be charged. And two, we'd have to update the city ordinances because the city ordinances actually say that we provide that at no charge, which is interesting because it's on the levy, but it's not a fee. And then, we'd also need to notify anyone who is receiving these services that isn't eligible for them because we won't be able to charge them for those services. That is one of the, that's the piece that is taking us a bit right now. So, we get a bill from Waste Management, of course, for so many, for so much each month. So, we anticipated that we could go ahead and transfer that and use that. However, the contract's a legacy contract that's been around for prior to Waste Management Advanced, whoever had it before that. And things over the years probably were not perfect as far as who gets serviced for what and how that record keeping is. They're currently doing an audit where they are geolocating all of the cans so that they know, you know, and then from there, we can figure out exactly, hopefully, or really, really close, who's cans are for which property and all that kind of thing. So, we need to make sure that we only have residential properties of one to four units that we are providing this service to because those are who, under the ordinance, receive it. It says by statute, anything less than five residential units per structure. So, one to four. So if there are any commercial businesses that are receiving that service or larger units, then we would need to make sure and take that off. Also, we have to get this into a format that we can dump this information into the county's system for the taxes, right? Because we need to provide them all of our special charges. We currently do provide special charges for other things, too, like your utilities. If somebody hasn't been able to pay their bill for some time, that can get put onto the tax roll and other, I'm sure you've heard of that before. So, this would be a, well, this would be a different line that would say something similar to recycling fee. And there'd be that, that charge there. So, we have a deadline to get this done mid-October. We're hopeful, but honestly, we have to work with Waste Management to ensure that we have the right names on the list or that we're competent enough to move forward. I mean, I'm not going to guarantee a hundred percent because, you know, but we certainly want to make sure that we are as darn close to that as we can get.
I also suggested to Jessie that I would like us to be a hundred percent accurate on this, that we're not rushing to try to make something work, that I would rather do it right the first time.
Understood.
So if we can't get it, we can't get it right, or we're not close enough or a hundred percent sure that we're accurate on it, I don't, we don't need to add any more issues.
That hundred and fifty thousand, hundred and fifty-six thousand, though, is shown as a special charge. So, as I mentioned before, if we don't move forward with the special charge, then that money has to come from the levy. But either way, the consumer's getting charged. They are. However, one would be probably by a borrowing and one would be through the special charge, if that makes sense. And we'll talk about some of the, how the short-term borrowing would work. But you're right, they are, they will pay for it either way. It's just how to pay for it.
Anybody have any questions for Jessie?
When you say that it can only be affected by residential properties of one to four, does that mean that the businesses are paying the old way?
Okay.
We have a contract, like businesses have their own contract, like we contract separately with GFL for our business to have them come pick it up.
Okay.
City doesn't cover it, it comes out of.
Anyone else is responsible for their own, exactly.
Yeah.
So, anyone, so if there was anyone on the list that we are providing service for that doesn't qualify, we need to notify them and let them know you need to find the provider of your choice and get something in place to, to go ahead and.
So this is just more like an audit to make sure we're not servicing something that shouldn't be serviced?
Yes, and that we're covering everybody who should be, yes. Yep, it's a, it's a good practice and Waste Management was going down this road anyways, but we're trying to work together to get the information in place so that we can move forward with this as well. But this is something that they are also doing. As we've talked about, this should give us a much better number of exactly how many pickups for garbage and recycling that they're doing. So, basically, what has been said is that there would be no retro, you know, if we've been underpaying for a few years or overpaying. But moving forward, it would be correct, is what the, the plan is for that. And understand too, and it's in here both ways, there's a garbage portion, plus two, and there's a recycling portion. It's the, the same provider, but within the contract, it lists how much it is for garbage collection and how much it is for recycling per bin, basically. So, it's the same provider, it's the same contract, but it's a different fee for recycling and for garbage. The garbage portion of that contract will remain on the levy, no matter what. It's just the recycling portion that, that we could pull to the special charge.
And just so we can answer questions, we have to keep the recycling on to get the grant we have correct? Like, we can't remove recycling?
Oh, right, we, we, we are required to provide recycling.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just want to make sure my facts are correct.
Yes, you are correct. For the grant, it doesn't matter if we collect that money through the levy or through a special charge. We can still get a grant from the state. It doesn't cover.
Yeah, I think it's.
But it's still like twenty thousand dollars. I mean, we don't want to lose it, but it doesn't cover recycling.
Any other questions? If not, we'll move on to number seven. Requests for proposals for municipal court attorney services, recommendation issuing RFP for municipal court attorney services for services to commence upon sixty-day notice to current provider.
Within your packet, you will see the current charges for both municipal court attorney as well as charges from transition from the previous city attorney to current city attorney. I suggest that it just makes sense every how often to go out and see what is offered by other, other options for municipal court attorneys. I asked, Matt provided some, excuse me, Attorney Shire, provided you some additional information to answer some of the questions that I had put forward. So hopefully, you've had a chance to review that information that was provided yesterday. Are there questions or?
To our knowledge, Matt, we've never gone out to RFP for municipal that you can remember.
I mean, none of it, never, but since I've been around.
Since you've been.
So, other than when I removed from the regular city attorney last year.
Right.
Right, that RFP was for.
Just for that, yeah.
Just for city, correct.
I would just echo that it's not a bad idea to go out to RFP. There's nothing wrong with it. It's a, I think it's a good practice to set some, I don't want to say limitations, but we've learned this over the last couple of years, just gaining whether it's our auditor and all the other different services that are provided to the city. You know, I don't know that, not that anything is wrong with it, but what else is out there? What kinds of fees, what kinds of services are provided? I don't think it's always meant to be a bad idea, a negative impact. Does anybody have any questions or did everybody have a chance to read over everything?
I read over everything, but it, I think where I'm confused is I thought that the discussion and the email seemed to be a justification of invoicing and, and I'm confused why we're talking RFP now.
Yeah, so a little back history, Jessie received the invoice for the last several months for municipal court and City of Berlin stuff invoices. And thought that they were a little steep. I know that there were some questions and that stuff was addressed in Attorney Shire's responses. And it just, the mere fact of tidying up our, trying to tidy up our budget, which is why we've gone out to RFP for a lot of these services over the last year.
I think there's, there's a certain wisdom in RFP on a scheduled basis. However, in this time where we're transitioning so many things with the city, I feel having a steady hand at the rudder of, that knows the city, that knows, that has the experience of Attorney Shire, that has all of the data at hand and easily, you know, and he's holding that municipality role or the municipal role, sorry, municipal court attorney role. To me, it makes sense to have it flow through a time of transition and then maybe you set a schedule and you say every five years on the thirty, the thirty-five or whatever, we go out to RFP. But I personally don't know if now is a great time for that.
I, I will note that I requested the numbers to do budgeting and I had numbers in, in the budget, just assumption. So, as I understand, the invoice were approximately ten to twelve thousand dollars a month for municipal court attorney fees, which would be a budget between a hundred and a hundred and twenty thousand. And I've got about fifty-five in there right now.
I do think it's also worth, the suggestion was made of looking at our fee schedule. You called it something else, so, it was a different term. The citation forfeiture amount.
Form deposit schedule?
Yes. Is obviously not a bad idea. That is something that we should be looking at, that we should talk with the chief on also. So there, I think there are adjustments that could be made to help us come a little bit more, is even the word, I don't. We've, we've discussed that in the past, too, and I, and I thought it was more recent, maybe Sam or Christina remember. I thought it was mentioned that it's been a while since we've done something like that. But I thought we did that more recently because we, I remember specifically bringing the question of, why is, why are these forfeitures or these tickets costing us more money in the long run? Why should somebody else's wrongdoings cost us money? That we shouldn't be in the red by something, somebody else did wrong.
Right.
So I thought we did that more recently. I don't know, Chief, do you remember what I'm talking? Twenty-three. In 23.
But there was no across-the-board increases. The minimum, the basic, what I mentioned in my report, the basic three-point speeding ticket, as long as we've had municipal court, which I don't even know how long we've had municipal court, ten, maybe 10 years, I don't know. It's always been the $30 base, which is just, whatever the court fees adds up to be about 98. Right now, it's 98.80. But we've always been at 30 bucks. That's never gone up.
So we only, you're saying we only recoup $30 out of the 98?
That is, what do we recoup, yeah, exactly. Yeah, but when you, but a lot of communities are prosecuting through circuit court, and the ultimate payment that a person pays for a speeding ticket is usually around a couple hundred dollars in a lot of communities. So we, I mean, you, if you wanted to equate something like that, you could boost your base forfeiture by double or triple and still get up to about $200 and still be equivalent to what a lot of communities are doing just because they're in circuit court as opposed to municipal court. You're just missing out on a lot of revenue if you do it that.
Do you want to? Brian, can you come to the mic?
To maybe help illustrate what Attorney Shire is explaining is, in the event somebody gets stopped in, in front of Badger Mining, you know, or down, within city limits, so by South Street, 15 miles an hour over the speed limit, the base deposit for that ticket, if I, as a, a Berlin police officer, write it, is 30 bucks. If a county deputy writes it, it's going to be $178 after the court costs are applied. Our court costs would make it a $98 ticket, $98 and change.
There's a lot of things in the City of Berlin that the income level or the cost to operate has stayed the same for many, many years. We were even just talking about that at the senior center, how prices haven't increased on a lot of things in years and years. So I think it's definitely worth revisiting.
What would be the benefit of having municipal court versus circuit court? If it's going to be the same amount?
But from the defendant's perspective, they're just seeing 180 bucks. They don't care where it goes. The benefit of a municipal court is we get a bigger chunk of it, if it's in municipal court.
And for them convenience.
The city gets a larger chunk.
It's here.
The fees are less.
Well, not if they don't live here. Point.
Basically, you, you were passing along the, the savings of doing a municipal court to the defendants rather than collecting that benefit yourself.
Jessie, is there a cost to?
Excellent idea.
Is there a cost to RFP?
No. It's staff time.
Staff time?
No, I would, um, propose sending the RFP to the, um, attorneys that serve the Lakeside Municipal Court and posting it on our website, and anybody who is interested could therefore, uh, put in a proposal. And, and then you can determine which proposal you feel is best for the community.
I know it says in here that like upon 60 days' notice, but do we have a current contract for like X amount of years with you handling our municipal? Or it's just an ongoing?
That is my contract now.
It's just ongoing until the 60-day notice is given by either party?
Yeah.
Yep.
And really the, even with the 60-day notice, I think it's something we just have to work out because the way municipal court works, if you're going to make a switch, I have, I, well, this court, as I, you'll see in my, in my outline, I kind of explain what's all made up into municipal court work, but there's, the first part is really what's called pre-trials. If somebody pleads not guilty, they get what's called a pre-trial conference. And, uh, I have gone through pre-trial conferences through Wednesday. I just did a bunch on Wednesday, uh, last Wednesday. And, uh, a bunch of those have gone to trial. Some of them don't settle because we don't, we don't make a deal. So they go to trial. Those trials are, I think Trina, my assistant, told me yesterday are into February, March of 2026.
So there would be an overlap.
If you transition and want to go to the new attorney, I would have to sit down and have a lot of transition time, kind of like what you're dealing with, dealing with, but that was what the whole issue is on the non-municipal court that was surprising apparently, that even though I mentioned it many times last year, that there was going to be a massive transition cost. There would be a similar situation. It wouldn't be as big, but I would have to sit with the new attorney and, and give him an update and, and give him all my synopsises from all the pre-trials that I've had so far, so that that attorney would come in and finish the, finish the cases. It's also subject to whether the judge will allow it. We have to get permission. We have to file a bunch of paperwork to get permission for me to switch. Or we can just pick a date and then have all pre-trials after that date done by the new attorney, and I would still finish out my trials, and then the new attorney would be running concurrently. That's another way. So that's something we would all have to discuss. But certainly the 60 days is meant to really built into that, that transition period if it's needed. So that's the reason for that.
So we would be paying two attorneys for a period of time?
Definitely. Even, well, yeah, for a period of time, yeah.
However, it should be the same amount of cases. I guess there'd be some overlap to talk through. But if you went from a date where the pre-trial switch, I don't see why there would be any need for, it would just, you'd still be paying for the same number of cases.
Gotcha.
So we could put a RFP out. That doesn't necessarily mean that that would impact or change.
You do not have to select one of the proposals. It, every RFP I think I've seen, or at least the vast majority of them, say right in there that they're not required to choose a proposal. So, no, you would not, you wouldn't have to.
Correct.
I think that that would also require Shire to put in a new proposal if he wanted to.
Well, I'm not going to, other than what I am. I, it's an hourly rate. It's 225 an hour. Your other municipal attorney, I think, is almost equivalent. You did that last year, got an hourly rate. You came out to, I think it's 220, you pay him. It's a matter of, if you want to find someone that gets a lower hourly rate, I don't know what else to propose, other than what I did.
I don't think that the hourly rate is the, I, I will be very clear that.
I don't want to argue, and I feel like you kind of just blew up when I was just trying to clarify something. I, I want to make sure that if we don't pick one of those proposals and we still continue to go with you, that that was a thing. If, if it's not required that you put in a new one, that's okay. The issue here is, is this is being looked at as a negative thing, and it's not necessarily negative. This could also be to make sure that you are in line with other lawyers at this point. My next question, though, Jessie, is how much transition time were we billed for by Eric?
Is that something that?
I, his bills are itemized. I don't recall anything that specifically says transition, but I can certainly go back and look.
I, I know, um, Matt, you mentioned that it was discussed that there was going to be a transition fee period. I, I will say right off the bat that I was shocked. I didn't, I guess, numbers were not discussed. I don't think that, numbers were not discussed, or at least with us. Obviously, that was a different administration also. We were, when some of those conversations would have been had, I think there was a lot that counsel never saw. Um, and so I think a learning curve, and, and Jessie seeing some of the, obviously, the, the billing coming through, um, I don't know, it was just hard, hard to see, I guess. I don't know that it's a.
Mayor, I think, I, I don't know what else to say. We had a meeting in my office, you and me and the mayor, in October of last year, I believe it was.
Yep.
At that time, I was over the annual hours for last year.
Right.
I said that every single bit of my time from that point on was already being billed at another full hourly rate.
Right.
And I, I couldn't, I don't think I could have been any more clear during that meeting, uh, saying that it's going to be massive next year. I went to the budget meeting and I said it multiple times. I don't know who was all here on that, but I said, you need to budget. The decision was, no, let's wait until it's, we, we can't, we, there was no, there wasn't a desire to budget for it last year. And they said, wait, and we'll deal with it when it comes up. It's now coming up. So I apologize. I, I could not have warned more that this was going to happen. Uh, and any sort of calculation of my, my regular hours going forward would have told, would have, would have concluded the, the numbers. I guess, I don't, I don't know if we not, we didn't sit down and actually calculate what those numbers would be, but I, I literally said, I, I, I showed a pattern of, of billing. I haven't changed that pattern of billing. I don't know what else to say, and I apologize that it is, it was so shocking, but it, that's much as I can say.
I think part of the shocking part of this is that we were not billed in a timely manner, and so we are getting a huge pile of thousands of dollars set at one time, and we asked, we had to ask for it. And so I think that part of that is running a business, and run, part of it is holding your staff and yourselves accountable to. And in the memo, you told us all of these reasons why it didn't happen, but.
Biggest reason was I almost lost my practice last year because of the city work. That's why I backed away from the city, from the other work, because I was so overcommitted doing what I needed to do for the city. I, I lost almost all my other clients, my regular clients. I have a few solid ones that I'm still doing. I, I'm fine, and I made that decision. But the fact, the reason that we have not focused on sending out bills is because it takes a tremendous amount of time to do it, and I have been focusing on digging out of the hole. I, I'm not trying to, that's not your problem, but it, it wasn't, I also didn't think it was harmful to hold off on sending a bill when the time value of money, you didn't have to pay me any earlier. I, I don't see the downside to having you wait a few months to get a bill, so.
But when we're seeing, what I'm saying is, is if we're seeing it in smaller chunks, we may not have noticed it like we did here.
I'm glad you've noticed it. I'm very happy that you've noticed it. Uh, I've been trying to ring the bell for a long time.
But you seem very upset by the fact that we are going out for an RFP.
I really am not upset. I, I don't like that there's a surprise thinking that I suddenly spiked a bill or something. That's what I don't like. Nothing has been different. Everything has been exactly the way I've been doing it and, and as fair as possible. It's just, last year was an absolutely horrible, horrible year of catching up. Uh, and then a transition, it's in my contract that says transition. I, I just don't know why any of that was surprised, surprising, so.
I, I do have a question. Attorney Shire mentioned that, and all we could do is ask for hourly rate. What else would an RFP instruct us in?
Well, I guess it depends what you want. You can't, you can ask if they have a different, uh, billing format that they'd prefer to use. I mean, you could have a, a straight monthly, you could have some sort of retainer. Although, to be perfectly honest, normally your hourly rate is considered your most fair because that's supposed to be based on, you know, how much work they actually need to do. So you pay for the work that they need to do, and they're paid for the work that needs to be done. Um, so I, not that you can't, I mean, so I, when I talked to a couple of other communities, there was one that said that they just have a, a monthly amount that they, that they pay. I don't, I'd have to get more detail as to how, but, um, I, I don't know. But I would assume most attorneys would put that forward as a hourly rate, but. You could, you could ask if they, if they had another preferred billing method or scenario that they would be willing to, to show.
Does anybody else have any questions for Matt, Jessie? Anything else that needs to be cleared up? Any suggestions, comments?
I guess I would just say in the future, I wouldn't mind timely billing. If health insurances and hospitals don't bill out in a timely manner, they don't get paid, so.
Or any, but obviously that's what I do for a living. On my real job, other jobs, is billing and posting and taxes and all that good stuff. And, um, I don't think that we're being unreasonable asking for a timely bill for not only our staff to go over so that it's not months later when it's harder to recollect or, or go through stuff. Um, and I know that that's, um, used, I hate the term how it's always been. We're a whole new board. We're a whole new staff in the last couple of years, for that matter. Change isn't always bad, and that I think that there's more efficient ways for all of us to work together.
And don't get me wrong, the, the delayed billing is not how it's always been. I, I've always regularly billed. We've been very regular. The reason that this time now is because of what happened last year. I was buried.
I know that one of the other issues, and I've heard this.
Could not catch up.
I heard this in the past. Um, I, I think I probably asked about it years ago when I was an older person, starting out probably five years ago, that the whole, all the, all the miscellaneous stuff. And I know that it was mentioned that, um, case, case numbers, names, that stuff can't be attached. But as the client, us being the client, I mean, obviously if stuff was, um, was requested via open records request or whatever, stuff would have to be redacted. But I don't think, is it that much of an ask to have some kind of? Miscellaneous to me is just a really awful word, and I don't like, especially in the billing world, that to not match anything up, miscellaneous is really hard term to, um, to let fly, I guess. I know you said that it would take more time, um, in your memo, that to take more time to record what you're doing, how you're doing it, or whatever. But anything more than miscellaneous at this point would be a perk. Does anybody else have any other questions?
I just wanted to check. All of the city items are wrapped up now, right? Correct? It's just municipal court that you have left?
Yeah. The only ones that I'm doing that are non-municipal court are things that, that we're, that Jessie knows about. Couple, there's a couple of items that we decided to continue, just because it was easier than transitioning. But there's only, I think, a couple of them.
I'm wary at this point, like Victoria said, of doing an RFP now. I like the idea of scheduling something and saying, yes, let's do this. I mean, obviously, communication on both parties has been an issue, but just maybe maintaining communication with the municipal court and cases. I love the idea of bringing that back to the constituents who are committing crimes.
And I'd even be willing to say, get us through the one year of transition and then project that we're going to go to RFP, and then in the meantime, look at those revenues, uh, possible recouping some of those costs in the meantime, in, in the course of this next year.
To just keep some better data and see where we're at this time next year.
I apologize, a short clarification. You do or do not want to change the fee schedule?
We will be looking at changing the fee schedule, but we would not go to RFP until next year.
Right. So get us through this year of transition with our, with, with Attorney Shire. But in that year, let's project that 2026, we're going to go, you know, end 2026, we're going to go to RFP after we review our fee schedules, after we look at. After we review our fee schedules, after we look at, can we increase revenue? How does that balance out the costs of everything? And then we have more data at the end of 26. But then we're projecting RFP, so it's not a surprise to anybody.
I would also argue that we should probably be looking at the fee schedule next month, since it's supposed to be done in 2025.
The other thing I mentioned in there was also, I, I can meet, I can talk to Jesse about it and talk to Eric about it, is the ability to pass on more. It requires probably more administration work. But to take a lot, there's a lot of legal fees for various types of files, developer files, zoning, CSA, any of those types of things. There, there's a lot of ordinances that say that the city has the right to pass those on to developers. There's been a philosophy over the years, perhaps right, I just think it should be considered that that kind of stuff chills development and, and scares developers away when we really want to promote it, and the city has chose to eat that kind of stuff more than, you know, maybe other communities that are, have more developers knocking down their door. So it's just something to consider, though, that there is more opportunities for reimbursement of legal fees that we're not, hasn't been happening. And on my billing, those are the starred items. And historically, I just have never had Jody or anybody come back to me and say that they're billing those out. I don't really know if they're billing them out, and, and it's just something that, and I haven't been tracking it. All I know is I identify it on the bills. Whether that was being transitioned into an invoice out to the, out to people, I don't know, but it's something that could be done more as a, as a revenue generator.
It is being done now.
What's that?
It is being done now.
It is being done. So that's good. Okay.
Yes.
Okay. So unless I hear any motions, I've heard that we're going to take this next year and really look at the data, trying to hopefully get on the agenda next month, Brian, to look at that schedule. To reevaluate what increases we can make or should make with cost of living over the last 10 years increasing is not obviously a bad idea. Something we probably should have done a long time ago.
I will adjust the budget accordingly.
Is everybody okay with it? Matt, I, I know that you put a lot of time into the, the memos and the I appreciate all the itemized, obviously, nobody questions that you take great notes and we're thankful for those, or I am at least. None of this was meant to be negative. We all appreciate your work over the last 28 years. I think with a new council and again, new administration, going out to RFP for a lot of these services every few years should be respectable as us as a council, looking to make sure that we're doing the best for the constituents. So it wasn't meant to be a negative. Yes, I admit, I was shocked on a lot of the things, but I think the shock was the time, the, the time that's gone by since since you've been with us and out of sight, out of mind, sure. As far as the billing, not you. I didn't mean it like that.
Definitely commit to more regular billing, which we're, we're definitely trying on that. We're going to be improving.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions, comments? No? Okay, we will move on to number eight then. Thanks for coming, Matt.
I appreciate it.
Number eight is the short-term borrowing options to balance budget.
Yes.
Another Adam.
Yeah, he can, he'll fill in the gaps for you here. But as I said before, our options for raising the levy are, of course, increased growth, which is going great, or of course, is borrowing. So one of the options, we've talked a little bit in the CIP about, you know, long-term borrowing, right, for major projects, you're going to, you know, take out a 10, 20-year loan or whatever for, for your long-term projects or equipment and things like that. But if we are going to utilize borrowing to increase the levy to pay for operations, what we would propose to do would be a short-term borrowing. So you would borrow the money in the previous year. So we would need to have this borrowing done this year so that it can be put on next year's levy, because you're, what you need to pay the debt back, your debt service, is what you can put on the levy. So we would take out a loan for however much that would be, a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand, depending on where we shore up after we add things in and get better numbers in certain places, right? We would need to have that borrowing done for sure by December 15th in order to put it on the levy. So I would suggest that we do that in November. So we'd get that money, and then, once we got the first set of tax payments to start rolling in, we would basically return it with the interest rate, which on 300,000, we estimated was around $3,700.
About that, yeah.
And then, of course, we would collect that money as part of the tax rule and have it available to pay expenses.
Was there, is this all we're looking at? Or was there something else that?
This, I, this was going to be verbal.
Oh, okay.
For term borrowing.
Sorry, yeah.
I do, and Adam ran some numbers about how it impacts the mill rate and all that kind of thing, because just like any other, like when we were talking about the long-term borrowing and how it impacts the mill rate, any borrowing, because you are increasing the tax, anytime you increase the levy, you increase the mill rate, unless your value went up.
Right.
Because it's a two-part equation, right? So it would, of course, have an impact per thousand for any borrowing that we would do.
The 24 tax bill, our mill rate was 556. What was 23? Do you, anybody know?
I'm sorry. I did not bring that with me.
I'm just trying to compare. Everybody's going to ask, and the easy question or the question that's asked the most is, what is it going to cost a taxpayer? What is it going to cost the average home, homeowner?
Sure. So for every hundred thousand dollars that we borrow on the short-term borrowing, estimated about a three cent mill rate increase.
Thirty cent?
Three.
Three cents.
Three cents. So if we borrowed 300,000, that'd be nine cents per thousand. So on an average home, let's say an average home is 180,000. So it'd be 180 times nine cents is what the increase would be due to that borrowing.
Just that borrowing.
Right.
Does that, is that calculating for everybody? So, yeah.
15 bucks roughly.
And that would get us to a balanced budget.
So that essentially, yeah. So this is where it comes into longer strategy. So really what that does is you're plugging a hole. So consider, you know, whatever your deficit is, what you're, it's allowing you to do is essentially go out and your short-term borrowing to allow your levy to essentially be raised, to increase the debt service. Because the only way you can put it on there is you have to basically have principal and interest payments paid off. So you're doing a one turn, you know, you're doing a one year, essentially, you're paying off the entire principal. That's allowing you to increase the levy and cover that deficit. This is not uncommon. This is the big problem, obviously, with levy limits. So there are plenty of other municipalities, I can tell you, bigger ones go out for almost $4 million a year just to cover their operations. The reason why it's done short-term is because generally that is something where you can long-term, you can go out long-term for kind of operations, but the problem is from an investor standpoint, if I'm an investor, I want to be investing in equipment. And long-term, I don't want to be usually investing in operations. So you can do that, but then your interest rate usually is higher. So that's why typically most places will do short-term. They'll go to a local bank and just do that, because that way, then it's, it's the most economical way to kind of cover that gap.
Can you help me with this calculation? Because I'm afraid I wasn't educated in this area. Nine cent mill rate on 180,000 comes, nine cent comes out to 16,000. I'm not getting where you get 15 dollars.
It's a, it's per thousand.
Per thousand.
It'd be times 180.
Thousand.
Not times 180,000. My apologies. Yep, it's per thousand. So it'd be times 180.
Gotcha.
Well.
Thank you for explaining that, because I was lost in the sauce. Okay.
No, no. Yeah, you had a hundred and eighty thousand dollar home, and you did a hundred thousand dollar borrowing. That essentially comes to a three cent mill rate increase. Which then equates to about five dollars that that homeowner.
So mill meaning a thousand.
Right.
Okay.
That's the thought, yeah.
I now follow the logic.
There you go.
Okay.
So essentially, for every hundred thousand dollars that you would need to increase, if their home value is 180,000, the estimate is it's about five bucks. That it would go up each.
Right.
Time.
So at nine cents, it's 16 dollars.
Right. You're about six, yeah, 15, 16. Right.
Yep. That makes sense.
Thank you.
So that would be my suggestion for wherever we end up for total needs to cover expenditures. Whatever we can't cover with the anticipated revenues and the levy that we're allowed to go to to increase that levy by short-term borrowing.
Well, and especially, we don't know what we have in reserves because of that wonderful audit. That's not, and it's not a good practice to keep draining our reserves. We know that.
Right.
This is one of the best and only options, then. To cover, cover the deficit, yeah.
Right.
And I really do, you've mentioned it's legal, but I really do want us to have a balanced budget at the end of the year, so.
It's, I mean, I think it was eye-opening, especially when our interim administrator was here, and I hate using that term. It's the way it's always been done. Budgeting for a deficit. Why, though? We never should have done that.
Right.
Well, I think we also need to look at the fact that we have other mill rates listed.
Right.
And great, City of Green Lake is at 499 per 1,000, but everybody else is $6 and above. So nine cents on 556, we're still significantly under.
That is true. It, you do have to take that with a grain of salt. That is why I also input the assessment ratio.
Right.
Because if your assessment ratio is lower, that number times the mill rate, you know what I mean? If your assessment's higher, your mill rate can be lower to come to the same number. So that's why I put that on there. But you're absolutely right. Our, our mill rate's not crazy.
No.
But that, that's why I included that, because it, it's, these are, these are complicated calculations that most of our, our constituents have had no reason to ever learn about. I mean, not saying that they don't understand. I don't mean it like that. But if you don't have any reason to go out and learn how all of this works, you probably haven't. So it.
Reading your tax bill 101?
Yeah. I mean, it, it is complicated. And so if you have questions, please ask them, because it's, it's not obvious right there. I mean, ask, ask, ask it, because if you're thinking it, a lot of other people are asking, have the same question in their mind.
Well, it's true. Most of the questions I get out in the wild has to do with like, why is Walmart getting charged this and I'm getting charged that? And it's such a more complicated answer than base rate, like.
Or even just understanding the stuff, you know, like, I, I know being on school board, same things. The, well, it says you raised it 22%. Well, no, that's not exactly how that works out. Just understanding your tax bill is a whole nother class. A, a lot of people, until you were on, in this seat, I didn't know how to read my tax bill. You learn a lot when you come into these positions. And the average taxpayer probably doesn't understand it fully, because it is so complex. So I think it's not a bad idea. I think this is our only option. It's the fiscally responsible option.
But we're not making a decision today until we have the final.
No.
No.
Once we, once we kind of figure out what your final number is, obviously, we can true up a better analysis and show you what the true impact is, but this was just to kind of give you a again, it's the vision of, just like you said, is everybody thinks their tax rate, they don't understand. There's tranches of that. It's debt service, it's general operations, it's this, it's the point of this is there's a lot of, you know, it's, it's a puzzle. How do you, how do you get that puzzle to connect? And what does that mean? And what's in the best interest of Bruin?
So now, now I'm really going to ask a question to screw all of us up.
Okay.
The total expenditures for next year have no road projects, correct?
You are correct. There is no capital in there. So, so when, when we come back together, I'm hoping at our, our next committee of the whole to get some more input from you. The first thing that we started out with tonight was the capital improvement.
Yep.
Projects list, right? That plan. So the question is, how much do you want to plan to budget every year, to borrow every year towards chipping away, as Adam said? When you do that, it directly impacts the mill rate, just like we showed.
Well, so the reason I'm bringing that up is because where is it? Right now, on this sheet, it says we wouldn't make a payment until 2027, correct?
Correct.
Which means that there is a huge difference between 2025, 26, and 27. Is there a way to even that out yet? Or am I getting way, like I going?
Yeah. So I mean, the way, that's where we can look at that, where once you decide kind of what projects you want to take on and what that number is, that's where we can analyze and we can talk about how you want to feather that debt in. Because that's a legitimate question. So there's ways where, you know, if the game plan is, you're going to do either every year, you're going to start borrowing that, or it's going to be every two years, we can look at how to structure those principal and interest payments. So just like you said, it's either, there's really kind of, there's two approaches. One is just as you said, it's you bite the bullet and you have that increase, but you understand the goal is eventually to get to where.
But there's no way to keep it even for next year, is what I'm saying, because it's like a point seven drop, point zero seven drop, point zero seven drop. But there is no way at this point to feather that.
Because there's, yeah, there's no, you have no technical projects that you did this year that would be going into that gap. Right.
What about short-term borrowing for that? I am trying to think of what may, like, I'm trying to start positioning what to get for next month.
Yeah. We could structure that. I mean, we could certainly look at it. The only thing is you'd be tied. I don't think in the long run, it would be better to loop that into a long-term borrowing than short-term, because you're going to pay more in you're going to pay more interest costs if you do short-term than versus long-term. That's the advantage to long-term, is you can spread those. There's ways where, just like you said, if the concern comes to that increase in that, you know, from going from 2026 to 2027.
I guess I was just thinking like, okay, so if we're looking at only 300,000, and that's only nine cents, what if we did like one of the smaller road projects or some of the chipping that's further down on the CIP list? And get those for short-term borrowing, get them taken care of and off the list, and keep the rate kind of similar, like closer to what it is now.
I mean, and really, people, people really were outraged at the jump this year, thinking it was assessments that did it, but it was really our $2 million borrowing that finally hit this year.
I just.
So it's going to be one of those jumps where, oh my gosh, our taxes just increased. They, well, we'd made those decisions a couple of years ago, or a year ago.
Feel like if we don't some, like, if we don't really try to feather something in for next year, 2027 is going to be really rough.
Yeah. And that, but that's then goes to the long-term conversation of the reason then is, the point of doing that is now we're starting that. And so, yeah, there always is going to be some initial hurt, but then the goal is you're now consistently going to do projects.
And this is stuff that should, if this was in place years ago, we wouldn't be in this position.
The, yeah, this is the long-term financial strategy, is the goal to get it to a point where eventually, you know, there's always a little bit of a roller coaster. But the goal is to flatten out that roller coaster. So now that every year that, as we show in those long-term projections, you know, there is a little bit of a bump, and then it flattens out, and you stay there.
And it's not a guess anymore. Like, this is something we should have.
Consistently, you know, as a council, that you are going to have, this is the CIP, here's your projects.
And anybody, any, any resident, anybody moving in, anybody can see these, you know, dare I say, shame on us for not having something like this in place for how many years? This is easy to point to. It's a tangible, this is our plan. And all of our decisions are now based around this.
Right.
This is something that would have made life a lot easier if this was just in place, but here we are.
Well, and to Sam's point, I think what Sam is saying is we're going to kind of see a decrease. And then bam, it's going to go up. So I think she's saying if you if we do a little borrow. Take some of that on ahead of time and get some of these projects.
If we're able to get some of it in 2026 yet, like, there were super simple, easy ones.
Oh, yeah. Crack filling, chip and seal roads.
Twenty thousand dollars, stuff like that. If we can get that in for 2026 yet, it's not, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars. Maybe combined, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars. Maybe it's only $400,000 or $500,000, not 750, 1 million, 2 million. But then people aren't going to go, hey, my tax bill went down, and now it increased by way more.
It's going to be a sticker check for sure.
So I, I do have a question, only because we don't have old business on our agenda. So I, I do have a question, only because we don't have old business on our agenda. And I, I wanted to revisit something on the CIP, which I didn't mention at the time, but Adam had said, and I think rightly so, that we put everything out on this. This is kind of our wish list. And I noticed the glaring missing pool on here. I know that we had talked about closing it for the year to figure out where we are, but why are we not even considering the pool as a capital project for the future? We haven't even sent it to referendum. Are you guys already deciding that you just are going to close it and keep it closed?
But honestly, I haven't even looked.
No, the last time we discussed this, it seemed like the council was moving in the direction of the pool would not be owned by the community.
Would not be what?
Owned by the community, like, we were talking about a potential sale or a gift. And therefore, we wouldn't have capital expenses for something that we no longer own. If that's not the council's direction to staff at this point, we can put that back in the capital plan. But honestly, the last time we spoke, I was under the impression that it was the council's hope or plan at that point, that it wasn't going to be a city facility anymore. Therefore, I, we didn't put it in as a city facility.
I don't know if any other organizations have stepped forward. I know that the Friends of the Berlin Aquatic Center declined, but I don't know if you guys have received offers from any other community members for that.
I think if that's the desire of the council, then we can talk about ways to garner proposals. And you can go out to RFP and ask any group, business, anybody, and you could define that a bit, what they would do with it and for, and what they'd be willing to pay for it, or whatever. And then make a decision from there, if, if that's the next.
Can you put it on the next, just the next agenda for us to talk about?
For possible next steps?
With the pool, yeah, I think it's.
Either way.
We need a discussion on it, it's not a five-minute. Obviously, we've discussed it a lot, but I think now that things have changed, it's worth a discussion.
Yeah, and I wasn't trying to rehash the pool discussion, I was merely saying that if the CIP is our capital project wish list and everything can go on there, doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to do it. I think it's important to get the pool included in that.
So it's important we all know what we're deciding to do with it.
No, I think you hit it on that. That was one we originally had in there, and then it was where, when we talked, it was, that has to be a you decision before we propose putting something in there, so.
Right, the last go-round that we had, it didn't appear that was the current strategy.
So let's add the pool to the agenda again. Next, what, what is?
Anyways.
What, right. What, just so everybody's aware, timeline-wise, when are you hoping to have budget hearings, budget adoption? What does your timeline look like? I'm just thinking, what is next month's agendas already look like, or the next month's?
For the next month's committee as a whole, I am hoping to have this discussion so that you guys can provide the feedback on the questions that we kind of went through and I, you know, if you need additional information and that kind of thing, so that we can start putting together a final document for you, because you have to adopt it in November. So we'll get as close as we possibly can for the October meeting, but some of the numbers might not be in yet. But if we can get that direction from you at the committee of the whole, so you have, you know, not a lot of time, but a couple of weeks.
And you said adopt in November, so we would have a special budget hearing for that? Or is that at the committee of the whole?
Oh.
Because we have the hearing, so when is the?
In November.
I'm asking, is that October, November? I know we have to have the hearing and then we have the adoption.
The hearing is usually.
They're usually the same meeting, though.
Yeah, okay.
Right, exactly.
But, so that's all in November?
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
So next month's agenda is a lot of narrowing down?
Yes, committee of the whole, I'm hoping that you can get me your thoughts and direction on those questions that we talked about. How much for the CIP do you want to consider? You know, what, what does that look like? Quarter million, half million, three-quarters million, million, two million, whatever that is. You know, now that you have this information, and if you do need additional information, what is that? So that we can, so you can feel prepared to make that, those decisions. Wages, of course, and we have, we'll have to take some steps for recycling if that's ready to go to. So I need to know if you're, if you are comfortable with moving that off of the levy.
I thought we had already decided to do that, so what are you?
There's been no official action.
Okay.
So.
I know, I, I mentioned the same thing, I thought we were already doing. We've talked about it several times, we've never had action on it. Are we not taking action because we really want to hear back from waste management first? Is that why we're not taking action?
Well, I think that we need to be confident that we can move forward well.
So, yes.
But, yeah, we're going to have to make that decision sooner than later, because they, it needs to be entered into the tax rule information in October.
Okay.
So staff's been working on this project for quite some time, and it has it about as far as staff can get it without some additional information from waste management. Waste management has been trying to help us as much as, as possible, and we'll see if we can get it done, or.
I have files.
Or if it'll have to wait till the, the following, following year.
They have it done by October 15th, but they haven't answered me.
But that's where, where we're at, so. Yeah, and please, if there's anything that you feel is missing, doesn't make sense, whatever, reach out. We will do our very best to get you, you know, we certainly want to make sure that you feel that you have the information, you need to make the best decision. Now, that may not be a decision that you're excited about, but a decision that has to be made and hopefully made in the, in the best light that we can.
Okay. Any other questions? Anything else we need to? I was going to ask you one question about the budget lines.
Okay.
I didn't see anything in there, or what line would it have been under? What are we budgeting for our third-party help for our acupan? Is that in there?
I think that would be.
I didn't know what it fell under.
Professional services, I believe is where we have that. Sorry, I had to find the right.
GLs, because I can barely keep a straight in church.
I tried looking, but I didn't.
Thousand GLs.
I knew you'd be nowhere it was.
I, I really wanted to request.
I have to think, I will, I definitely will find.
I just want to make sure that we're budgeting enough. I know what the last couple of years have looked like, and I want to make sure that there's enough, so that we're not running into the same issues.
No, that, that's fair. I, I do think, to be honest, that we've fallen off a bit since the beginning of the year, but I do anticipate that next year during the audit again, we're going to be way better than this year, but I'm sure there'll be some minor things that we only having done it once are probably going to need a little, little refresher, a little, a little help on that type of thing, but. But we, we're, we're getting closer to having seen, seen it all, right, Deb? So.
Can you find a different term? I hate that, we're almost there, it's getting closer.
We said that since August.
No, we said that for what I want.
21 or 22 months.
What's that?
Was I clear enough for what I want for short-term borrowing?
Yes.
Just checking.
Any other questions?
Let me write that down.
Number nine.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that. Any, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion. Meeting adjourned at 8:08.
Thank you all for your perseverance. Thank you. Thank you.